Good afternoon, welcome to the November 13th meeting of the Planning Board. At this time, would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by Winston-Salem TV Digital Media and will be rebroadcast at 10 o'clock a.m. Friday morning and again at 4 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Additionally, an on-demand recording will be available on the City of Winston-Salem's YouTube channel. Before we begin this afternoon, I'd like to recognize Winston-Salem City Council member Joyner, who I believe is with us.
There she is. Podium's in my way.
Thank you very much for being here. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda containing items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the planning staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless the planning board asks them a question. The items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the elected body, either the Winston-Salem City Council or the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations which are considered by the elected body during their review of these requests. For general use zoning requests, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the specific zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific intended use of the property. For special use district zoning requests, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. If you're addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October 9th and October 23rd meetings. Is there a motion of approval? Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now going to call in Mr. Mark Arred, who will take us through the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first up, we do have three cases that have been continued to December 11th. First one is B5W3672, and then it's C2 subdivision number 2025116, and PBR 2025-20. They all asked for continuations for the same reason, they all needed some site plan First up on consent is item B2. This is W3669. This is Serenity's Property LLC. This is a rezoning from RS7 to RSQ Limited Use. So they're asking for the uses residential building, single-family, residential building duplex, and residential building twin homes. And this is on a 0.82 acre property, northwest intersection of East 14th Street and DelaBrook Road. You can see here to the, you know, kind of to north, to the east, north, and to the west is RS7, to the south is Winston-Salem, Winston, sorry, Winston-Salem Preparatory, and you've got some RS7 and some multifamily here to the southwest. If you see on the aerial, this is a developed site with a single-family residential with access to DelaBrook Road. And as you can see here to the northwest, I'm pointing out some legally non-conforming duplexes. You've got five of them here to the northwest of the site. And there is also a legally non-conforming multifamily here to the southwest. All right, so the area plan does have this as single-family residential, zero to eight dwelling units per acre. The rezoning that's being discussed will not alter, or proposed will not alter the neighborhood's established character because there is other multifamily in the area. The site is within a Tier 1 neighborhood for the city's Transforming Urban Residential Neighborhood Program, which targets additional residential development. And the request conforms to the general recommendations of 2045 in the east-northeast Winston-Salem area plan by adding diverse housing near existing services and infrastructure. For these reasons, staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for staff?
Just a question. Was the house previously a duplex? It kind of looks like it.
It's a good question. I'm not sure, so.
Well, not aware. No, okay. I don't know.
You don't know? Okay, it looks kind of, the design is kind of split, where it looks the same on both sides, looks like it has two porches, just wondering.
Any other questions for staff?
Yep, the legally non-conforming two-building apartment complex to the southwest, is, how is that legally non-conforming? Surely it wasn't built so early as to...
There's a good chance it was probably built in the early 60s, late 50s, which was before zoning came in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No one has signed up to speak in opposition to this item. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3669.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any further discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is item B3. This is W3670, the applicant's BMS Investment Properties LLC. This is a rezoning from General Industrial to RS7. It's 0.425 acres at the northeast intersection of North Glen Avenue and Haynes Avenue. You can see here the General Industrial, that's pretty much been here from the beginning. You do see a little bit of residential that's come in here in general business, and we are across the street from an RS7 residential neighborhood. All right, the aerial shows this as a vacant lot, and again, you can see the industrial that's down to the south. To the north is a legally non-conforming single-family house to the north here, and you can see the general business that's come in more recent, and there is an activity center up here. And as you can see here, the area plan does recommend single-family residential, zero to eight dwelling units per acre, which makes this consistent with the 2045 and the east-northeast area plan by promoting residential infield. And this supports the area's ongoing transition towards residential and general business uses that's been going on in the area. Did you have any questions? Staff does recommend approval.
All right. No one has signed up to speak in opposition to this item. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3670.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next is item B6. This is F1662. This is the Keystone Group Incorporated, also known as Wahlberg Landing. This is a highway business special use to RM18 special use. This is 0.73 acres at southeast intersection of Wahlberg Landing Drive and Overline Drive. What the applicant is wanting to do is join this portion of the parcel to this RM18S, which is Wahlberg Landing Apartments to the west. To the east is the shops at Wahlberg Landing. To the east, there is to the north, a restaurant with a drive-through, also known as McDonald's. And to the south is a shopping center with the anchor being of a food line. It is in Davidson County. So we're right on the boundary line, county boundary line. As you can see from the aerial, this is already a developed parking lot and a site. This property was rezoned HBS in 2001, so it's been sitting there for a while, waiting for redevelopment. So it's been a long time it's been sitting as a highway business special use. And the South Suburban Area Plan does recommend this as commercial, showing the existing zoning district that exists there. But again, it's been this way for more than 20 years. The plan that you see in front of you is actually a three-lot mixed-use development. This lots two and three here are already developed. This is the shops at Wahlberg Landing, so what we're concentrating on is this one here, which is Lot 1. This is a proposed three-story, 12-unit apartment building with existing parking and access drives off of Overline Drive and the shopping center here to the east. And there is internal sidewalks that already exist along Wahlberg Landing Drive. This is the overall site plan, Lot 1, that we're talking about is down here to the southeast. The overall site plan for Wahlberg Landing Apartment Homes is here. With this existing, they had to add some additional common rec area to meet UDO requirements. That's the reason why it's showing that to you. So you see the existing, but they had to add this blue section here to meet the requirements. Here is the elevations as you see in front of you. Staff looks at this as providing needed in-vil housing in an area already served by public infrastructure. Redevelops an underperforming commercial parcel that has shown no market demand and enhances walkability and mixed-use character by placing residents next to existing commercial services, and for this reason, staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? No one has signed up to speak in opposition to this request. Is anyone here in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of F1662.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is item number C1. It's a subdivision 2025115. This is Salem V Road subdivision. It's a 10-lot major subdivision, RS9, located in Forsyth County. It's 5.88 acres at the east side of Salem V Road between Mersha Court and Night Owl Court. And this is just a 10-lot major subdivision, and everything here does meet UDO requirements. You can see it's quite a large lot, so. Staff will take any questions, but does recommend approval.
Questions for staff? What's the pleasure?
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, next is item D1. This is PBR 202519. The subdivision is Hidden Hill Subdivision. This is a 77-lot PRD in RS20, 53.25 acres across from the intersection of Pretty Farm Road and Tuttle Road. As you can see on the map, we're really close to Stokes County here, so we're also really close to the City of King. As you can see here, the PRD does meet the intent of the ordinance, providing a required mix of open space. You can see these four spots kind of mixed throughout the subdivision. You've got stormwater device here at the front and internal circulation of two streets. It does meet UDO requirements. There is an off-site sewer pump station serving the development. Shall be approved by the City of King or Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities Commission brought online. This has to be done before the signing of final plots. So that's the, you saw that condition in there. Staff, I mean, sorry, does board have any questions?
To the southeast end of the plan, why does that street just stub out?
As you can see here, this is a pretty large stream, and also, the reason why it doesn't stub through and come through is because it doesn't seem like it's really serving anything over here into this area.
Staff recommend approval?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, we'll now go back to item B1 on your agenda, which is case number W3666. If you recall, this was continued from your October meeting. I believe you had asked the petitioner if they would be willing to remove the use outdoor display retail. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark, and he can give you any updates. We can also hear from the petitioner. You can also ask us any questions.
Should I bring the petitioner up, or do I need to, can I speak for him?
However you want to do it.
Okay. So the petitioner did send an email to staff stating that he is willing to remove the use outdoor display retail, so if he wants to come up and speak for that.
See, we do have that in our files, but probably just for the record, since it is a public hearing, it'd probably be good to have the petitioner come back and just verbalize that as well.
And we did not close the public hearing last time, so Mr. Foster, if you'd like to come up and talk to us, please. Just a reminder to give us your name, address, and zip code for the record.
Name, David Foster. Address, 4487 Cheyenne Court, Winston-Salem, 27106. So I'm back again today just to discuss 2572 South Stratford Road, and we still want to continue moving forward with trying to get the approval for Services A, but we are going to drop the outdoor display retail after we got a drawing from the architect on where any kind of parking could go. And unfortunately, with the setbacks, just didn't make sense. There was no space for it, so we understood that that wouldn't work any further. So we are going to drop that.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak in opposition to this matter. Is there anyone here opposed to this matter? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any questions for staff or any discussion?
If, I would say, if, probably, since the information that's in your book does include the use, if there is a recommendation for approval, it probably should just reflect that the recommendation is for Services A only.
That was my question.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I further move that the planning board recommend approval of W3666
With Services A.
All right.
Limited to.
Limited to Services A.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion? Everybody understand what we're voting on. All right, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Oh, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Taylor for hanging in there one more month to get to a yes. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, aboard with that, that would bring us to item B4, which is case number W3671, and we'll hear from Mark Arred on this case.
Yeah, so again, case number 3, W3671. Petitioner is Goldwater Holdings LLC, doing business as Eagle Properties. The site is 0.23 acres located at the southwest intersection of Interstate 285, also known as US 52 and Arnold Avenue. This is a special use limited rezoning from RM8S to limited industrial limited use. The only use they are asking for is signs off premises. That's the only use of consideration. Here is the, here is the location. You can see it's in GMA3, suburban neighborhoods. All right, so you see here that the site is currently located in RM8S. The petitioner who's petitioned is also petitioned for the rezoning to RM8S. It's the same petitioner. He previously rezoned a property from LB to RM8S in 2022. There was at the time a legally non-conforming billboard existing on the site at that time. The UDOs, our UDO's non-conforming provisions allowed the billboard to remain. After the billboard was removed for a replacement with electronic sign, NCDOT denied the new permit. That's kind of a history of how we got to this point. The aerial, as you can see it, I lost my laser pointer, but so you can see the billboard was originally here. If you look close enough, it's wooded, but if you look, you can see it's cleared out where a sign would actually show towards 52. From this, from this zoomed out, it's really hard to see, but you just have to kind of trust me on that one. So the area plan is the South Suburban Area Plan Update recommends office low-intensity commercial, which uses for the subject property. So off-premise signs are permitted only in LI, HB, and a GI district. HB requires a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The GI requires a minimum lot size of three acres, but LI requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, so it's a much smaller minimum requirement. This is the only district he could use that wouldn't have a negative impact on what was approved in 2022, that townhome development that was RM8S. So he was, he's able to rezonate to this and not have a negative impact on that development. However, as you look at it from an area plan standpoint, the only industrial property on his side, you see down here on the far south, but it's actually a SLUKA, if you see the little asterisk and a C, and one of the recommendations is no expansion. So when you come to, when you hear about a recommendation, it's going to be highly based off of this, the area plan. As you see here, the photo, if you can kind of see that July 2022 date, you can see the billboard here. Again, hard to see, but there is open area here as you're driving on 52, and we're looking at it from Arnold Avenue. And this is today, same point, and you can kind, you see it's down, but the subject property is directly in front of us. This is looking south along South Main Street. The subject property is 280 feet to the left. This is looking east on Arnold Avenue. Subject property is to the right, and it's looking west on Arnold Avenue, property is to the left. And this is looking across the street, so you can kind of see the residential components that exist in this neighborhood. So the petitioner has chosen the least intensive use from a size standpoint of 10,000 minimum square feet with LI. However, the proposed limited industrial limited use zoning is inconsistent with the area plan, which recommends office low-intensity commercial. Introducing industrial zoning on Arnold Avenue would conflict with the residential character of the street, which you saw the houses there across the street. Proposed use could negatively impact the surrounding viewshed and undermine the area plan's recommendation for preserving the area's visual quality. And for those reasons, is the reason why we came to a denial. Staff recommended denial. Any questions?
So, did NCDOT specify why they denied his application?
The action, basically, and again, Kirk can probably, he's actually looked at the statutes more recently than I have in the NCDOT's billboard manual, but there's a provision in the NCDOT, in the general statutes, that basically says in order to have a billboard, to get permitted for a billboard by NCDOT, it has to be in a area zoned non-residential. Whenever they went through the process to rezonate the property to RM8S, the billboard was already non-conforming. It wasn't legal to the existing LB zoning that was there. When they rezoned to add the townhome use, it didn't create a greater level of nonconformity. It was already non-conforming. Under our non-conforming provisions, you can, the billboard would be allowed to remain, the billboard would be allowed to be replaced with a modern billboard under our non-conforming It's my understanding that the billboard was removed by the previous property owner or, and/or owner of the billboard, and then whenever the current property owner went to secure the permit for the billboard from NCDOT, they were denied based on the fact that it was zoned residential. So they did seek to get the permit, but it was denied by NCDOT. The property owner exhausted a lot of, had numerous conversations with various folks in NCDOT, and there was no remedy to that.
So basically, if these, if this had been done in a different order, the steps had been done in a different order, he'd already have the billboard back up.
Correct. If the property had, if the property had been acquired and not rezoned for multifamily, had just been left LB, and they had gone through the process to replace the existing billboard with a more modern billboard, it would have been permitted under our ordinance, under the non-conforming provision, and theoretically, I can't answer for NCDOT, but since it would have been zoned non-residential, I'm assuming NCDOT would have issued that permit, they could have had the billboard in and then come in later to rezonate for the townhomes, and, right, and we would not be here.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Signed up to speak in support, we've got Jacob Taylor. Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to come up and give us your name, address, and zip code for the record, and let us know what you'd like us to know.
Hey, my name is Jacob Taylor. The address is 726 East Devonshire Street, and the zip code is 27107. Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jacob Taylor, and today I'm here on behalf of our company, which operates in the media and advertisement industry. A few years ago, we rezoned our property that contained a legally non-conforming sign. The owner of the sign removed the sign, and we lost our legally conformant status, and we're here today respectfully requesting a rezoning of the property to allow the sign to be re-permitted. Over the last two years, our company has continued to grow in its commitment to community impact, as we are from and currently live here in Winston-Salem. Beyond our work in the media, we've been exploring how the same property can contribute to help fund afford, to help fund affordable housing, opportunities, and local development efforts. We believe this site can play a dual role in Winston-Salem, supporting our business operations while also serving the broader needs of Winston-Salem residents. We recognize and appreciate the staff's time in reviewing our request, and we want to assure the board that we intend to remain in full compliance with the city's design and zoning standards. In that spirit, we hope the board will view this request as not a step back from the 2045 plan, or rather as a practical step towards inclusive and forward-thinking growth that the board envisions for Winston-Salem. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
You mentioned contribute to affordable housing. How does that work with this?
So, it's our hope that the revenue that comes from the billboard will help us fund a multifamily project that we're working on to provide affordable housing for the community here in Winston-Salem.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
How much time's left?
10 minutes, 30 seconds.
All right, anyone else, anyone else here to speak in support of this proposal? All right, hearing, seeing no one, we'll shift to the opposition. Is anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any discussion?
Kills me, these kinds of cases. I'll go ahead and get a motion on the floor.
Unless there's any other discussion. That was well said. I don't know if you can say anything else.
I was waiting for the rest of it.
You know, the craziness, just the chronology being the impediment is ridiculous, but I'm going to make a motion, then we can have a discussion about the motions. Is that all right? I move that the planning board find that the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Patino. Any discussion on the...
Inconsistency.
Inconsistency. Thank you.
Okay, then, oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3671.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second. Second by Mr. Steelman. Any further discussion on that?
So, the previous, the non-conforming sign looked very low-lying, sort of nestled in the grass there, so, but maybe could you refresh us, Mr. Murphy, on kind of what could be replaced as a more modern sign in terms of height, dimensions, lighting needs for something like that, and how that might impact the surrounding residents?
Under the nonconforming provisions, and again, I have to give you two different answers. Under the nonconforming provisions, the size and the height of the sign would not be allowed to increase. It could be modernized and go from a static billboard to an electronic billboard, because we do not regulate the way the message is conveyed. We only regulate the size and the height. If, and again, so that's under the nonconforming provisions. So that's if they had been able to replace the sign under NCDOT, you know, if NCDOT would have issued the permit under the existing RM8S zoning, under the nonconforming provision. Under the, if this were approved today for the use sign off premise, they would just be held to the standards in the UDO, which I believe is 35 feet in height and 640 square feet, I think, which is probably consistent with the size of the sign was out there. The sign, I mean, I think they would be allowed to be a little bit taller, but the electronic message board, if they, if that's what they decide to go with, would have been allowed either under the nonconforming provision or under a new permit issued today. So your difference is really going to be probably in height. Now, I'm not a billboard person. It sits, it already sits up on a hill, so I don't think you would probably want to then have the sign be, you know, 35 feet taller than, and again, I don't know what the existing height of the sign was, but I don't think you want to get drastically higher, because then you're removing the eyes from the sign as you're driving up or down 52. You want it to be in your view area. All that's a convoluted way of saying that since we're not under the nonconforming provisions, they would be allowed what's allowed in the ordinance currently for sign off premise, and Mark's pulling up those standards right now. 672.
35 feet is correct for the height.
And my question is about the fact that there's the two houses across the street. So when it comes to placement of a sign, is it like the sign cannot face a house, or the sign, you know, light cord, or I don't know, maybe making up terms, cannot be directed towards residential? How does it work?
There are any regulations in our ordinance. I can't speak to NCDOT, what, if NCDOT itself has any standards. I don't know whether the, I know that the petitioner did, under their public outreach, did go around, I think, and talk to folks. I'm not sure what, what they heard from the folks that lived in those homes. But again, the, the way the current sign sits, it kind of sits probably at a 40-degree angle to the road, and it was a one-sided billboard, so it only faced, if you were heading north, it faced to the south. My guess would be if they were going to try to replace this under, now, since they could do a new billboard, they'd probably do a billboard that does something like this, where they would be able to message both, from both directions.
North and south.
But, you know, I would think that the sign that would be looking for southbound traffic facing north, that it's going to be oriented to the road. I'm not saying that the house might not get some light, but it's certainly not going to be oriented directly to that house. It's going to be at an angle.
If we were to, if we were to support an approval or to recommend an approval, can we place conditions on that, such as?
You could, but they would, they would have to be conditions that would be agreed upon. In other words, you can't, you can't just say we'll approve this with this. You would need to get concurrence from the petitioner.
Get him back to where he was. And so if we could get it conditioned such that the sign would just give his rights under the nonconforming status, if we could get him back to there, that, you know, that would be potentially less intrusive than a brand-new sign that might be taller and might be coming from two directions and things like that. So my question is, is it possible that we can word the motion such that we give him back his right that he had?
I think what staff's saying is that the petitioner would have to consent to that prior to our voting on it.
Kind of like the other case.
Yeah. And I, I don't, speaking for myself, I don't have an objection if, if they need some time to work on that, just as we did with that last case. I would be open to, you know, continuance.
Again, I will let the petitioner speak. I think they're under a deadline for the end of the year. It's my understanding. But that was a conversation that had been relayed. Whenever we were trying to, initially, they had come in as HB, and because the 20,000 square foot, we kind of pivoted and went to the LI, because again, it, it was less intrusive to the multifamily development. They couldn't continue because they had a December deadline, so.
So, I'm sorry?
Well, I'm just, I was just going to have a different opinion.
Sure.
I'm not crazy about billboard in this location. I don't know if anybody has that similar thought. I do, it is unfortunate in the timing, but it's, it's a nice corridor without having a billboard, and there's plenty of other parcels along this corridor that could partake in a rezoning and refer to this site, and refer to this as an example.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the petitioner is up here. I'm not sure if he has, if, if he's prepared to answer your question or...
So did you understand where I was headed with the potential restriction on approval if we were to decide to recommend approval?
Yeah, I have a pretty decent idea. And based off what I heard, I think we're willing to move forward with that and agree to the terms that you laid out.
So what you'd end up with, and correct me if I'm wrong, you'd end up with the same rights you had to refurbish the existing signs. So the height restrictions, the size, the one-sided sign, all those things would apply. You wouldn't have a two-sided sign, you wouldn't have a higher sign, you know what I'm saying?
And how do we verbalize that?
Well, and again, I think as long as they agree to it in principle, we're going to have to come up with written consent to conditions before it moves on to council anyway. I think we can work with the petitioner and Steve Causey, who is representing them as well, and, and come up with some language that works. So just to make sure I understand, basically, we're looking at the sign being no larger, no taller, and it be one-sided facing south.
At the same angle.
Orientation to the south, essentially the same orientation. Okay.
And it would be allowed to be either static or digital.
Yeah, because he would have had those rights.
He would have had that right anyway.
I'm going to throw a wrench in there. The only question I have. Wasn't the sign torn down? Or did I get that mixed?
Well, no, I mean, it, it was removed, but there's...
And we know what it was? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, we have it.
Oh, I see what you, yeah.
We have an inventory.
Oh, okay.
We have an inventory from, from, we have an inventory from the mid-'80s that has the height, the size, et cetera.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Very good point.
Good question, but we do have that information.
Do it like you did before, but we don't know what you did.
Right, right.
All right. Any, any further discussion? Does, does Mr. Lamb, I think, probably need to amend his motion?
So I do amend my motion to continue this to our, no, we're not going to do that. We can take care of it right now? I understood. Okay, all right. Let me start over. Let's see. My motion is to recommend approval, but constrain the refurbishment rights to what they were under the nonconforming restrictions.
Yes, I think that will be ample, and you can say such as height, orientation, square footage.
Single-sidedness, you know, that kind of stuff. In size.
All right.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, or amended motion by Mr. Lamb, and second by Mr. Patino. Any further discussion on that? All right. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's one, two, three, four, seven, one. Seven to one. That passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate it. Before we move on, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Councilmember Cipio, who tried to sneak in on me, but I, I caught her. She wasn't, could see her. Councilmember Joyner was behind the podium. I almost missed her, so.
I'm, I'm writing myself some notes, so I'll, I'll jump in here just a second. Okay, sorry. Making sure I have what I need to make sure we get that condition writ correct. Mr. Chairman, the board under staff report, I will turn to Mark, who will quickly give you a zoning case preview for December.
So we have seven total items, three of them that you remember that were continued. We have two new rezoning cases, one disposition of city park land, and one new planned residential development.
All right. With that, I'll turn it over to Kirk, who I know some of y'all met our, I won't call this person an intern, but we have someone who did a shadowing experience with us today, and I'll turn to Kirk, who will introduce him.
All right, thank you, Chris. And again, good afternoon, board members. But I'd like Connor Tahera to go ahead and stand up. Connor is with us from Forsyth Tech, and he's currently enrolled in the Public Administration program there, but he has an interest to parlay that into future coursework and a career in urban planning, so.
Careful.
He reached out. He reached out to me a while ago, and we've been trying to set something up. So we took him on the rounds with all the major work, functional work areas within the department, from zoning to permitting, enforcement, long-range planning, et cetera. So I think he's, definitely has a better understanding of what being a planner can entail. But again, just wanted to thank him for coming out with us today.
Glad to have you.
Mr. Chairman, the board with that, I only have two more items. Remember that we will not have work session on Thanksgiving. I would assume that y'all would, would not want to be here on, on Thanksgiving, so that is actually work session, so we won't have one in November. We won't have one in December either, but before then, we will have our holiday reception at 3:30 on the 11th of December. So if you can, try to get here a little early, and we'll, we'll, we'll send you another reminder about that as we get closer, but just if you could kind of pencil that in and try to get here about an hour early, so we can have a reception downstairs before we come up here for the meeting on the 12th, December 11th, sorry. And with that, I am finished with my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Before we adjourn, I think I speak for the entire board, and I hope the members of the staff that are here will pass this along as we enter Thanksgiving or head into it. Know how thankful we as a board are for you and how hard you work, and your efforts on behalf of the community. You guys always, I feel like, approach things very even-handedly, looking to try to find ways to make things work, and that's not as common as it should be. So thank you for all your hard work, and we hope you have a great Thanksgiving. And Brenda's not here, we may not be able to leave.
I think someone can take care of it.
Move adjournment?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.